All council members here, and I am going to call to order this meeting of January 11th. Start with the subject line.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
May we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Mayor Connors? Yes. All right. Item two is public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone who's here tonight has an opportunity to address the council. Expect matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on a theme or subject matter, the mayor may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. The city council will take no action. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak to the council? All right. Well, did we get any emails by any chance to work? If not, okay. We'll move on to item three, public matters. We have none on the agenda tonight. That takes us to number four, enactment of ordinances. None again. And moving right along to the consent calendar, we have one item on tonight's consent calendar. It's the city council minutes from December 14th, 2022. Does any council member have anything to say about those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept. Give a second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connors? Yes. All right. Monthly activity reports, these are matters that do not require public action, but they or do not require action from the council, but they are of public interest. We have business license activity report for December of 2022 for anybody who cares to see all of the exciting new businesses that have been licensed within our city. Number seven, commissions, agencies, and authorities. The Willett City Council meets concurrently as the City of Willett's Planning Commission and City of Willett's successor agency, but we have no business there tonight. Number eight, city manager reports and recommendations. We have two items, adoption of a new official city logo, and I believe our esteemed city manager will assess this item.
Esteemed tonight?
Indeed.
You've been rolling through. I'm just trying to keep up with my notes here. Thank you.
She's going to try to set a record.
Okay. That's great. So yes, there's two items on there, Madam Mayor. The first one, I am excited and so is staff, is to present for your consideration and hopeful, hopeful adoption of a new official city logo. The logo that is in your packet is, is a colored reproduction, and it kind of breaks down different elements and the, the logic behind its composition. This is an item that the council, as part of your adopted goals from 2021, basically has tasked the organization to be more engaged with the public, various items. We're updating the website. We're going to be working on newsletters. We're trying to do increased activity with Facebook posts as well. And as part of that, and we recognize that we want to do a branding opportunity. We want to retake the organization and its community into the, the future, project it forward. The current city logo dates back from the early eighties, and it's there. It, it's very colorful with the blue and green and some of the elements associated with this, with that one. But this is an opportunity to put something forward for your consideration that, you know, we're all, we have recognized that we're committed to, you know, putting the city forward, putting a, a new progressive approach on different items. We're looking at our internal operations. We're looking at new projects. And we just think, from staff's perspective, through me, to ultimately to the council, that this is a grand opportunity to put our best foot forward beginning of the year and have this new logo to represent the new vision of the city.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions? Yes.
So I like it, but I guess since you talked about engagement, did we put this out on Facebook or anything like that, or out there to ask the public?
No. So, no, we did not. This was an internal operation. And it's kind of, it was kind of a, like a Sunday afternoon lunch hour type project. Ms. Perry is in the office, the audience there. She was shepherding the effort. She was coordinating, coordinating the coordination with our consultants at Dudek, who actually did the urban forestry management plan. And there's a story there. When we were looking at one of the initial drafts of the document, they, they had space on a page, and they wanted to do a logo. And lo and behold, they did one. And we're like, oh, it smokes. That's nice. We liked the image. And one thing led to another, and, and next thing you know, we committed to taking the, that preliminary, preliminary, that preliminary, that early graphic and refine it. And it went through many revisions back and forth, and that's what we see here. No, it did not go to the public. This is an opportunity for the council to make a statement that this is the logo that you want to see presenting the organization and your efforts in moving this organization forward.
Okay.
Anybody else? Madge?
Yeah, I, I like it, and I like the one that we have had so far as well. So I wouldn't have objected if we didn't do a new one, but since a lot of thought and creativity went into it, it's fine with me. One thing I was wondering is, are all of the, like, police cars and, you know, how much are we going to spend in transitioning, or can we continue to have two logos for a while and not spend a bunch of money transitioning?
Good point. And that's, that has been discussed at staff level several times. So the, the intent, the intent is to do a slow rollout, is to, part of the package that we received is how this item is going to be reproduced on different backgrounds, different medias, size, scale. So we do have that type of combination. What we'd like to do is gradually, as new officers, and Sergeant Walson's in the audience here now, as we bring new officers, new staff members into the police department, their uniforms are going to carry the transition or the, the moving forward. As we bring vehicles onboard, we're going to also be installing the logos on there. And then gradually, we'll go back to the older units and start replacing them. So it's going to be as new units, uniforms, crew members, and vehicles and equipment come onboard, we'll put the logo, the new logo on that, and then gradually backtrack from there.
So I sort of imagine that you'll start with the inexpensive options first, putting the logo on the city's website and Facebook page, using it on agendas, that kind of thing, and then slowly putting it onto things that will cost money to do.
Yes. So, yeah, like I said, we're deep into the effort of restructuring the website, and that is going to be a whole new design from the current configuration. As part of that, will be the logo.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Yes. I like it, and I just wondered if there's a silk screen of it.
We can obtain that.
Right.
It would probably be a third party.
Okay.
Probably not do that, throw out that type of thing, but it would be available.
Thank you.
I like the logo. I think that it's neutral enough that it doesn't, it doesn't offend anybody. It's gateway to the redwoods, and you've got the redwood trees there, and fairly symbolic of our, our, you know, what you would expect when you come to our community. It implies that there's a place to play and trees and so forth, and I like the fact that we didn't put anything in there that, you know, maybe represented something that has had changing values for people in the community. So I think it looks clean and sleek and professional.
I would go a step beyond neutral even and say it's handsome and fresh, and it puts a good, a good face on, on our organization. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into it.
Once again, I pointed this.
Has a more modern look to it.
Yep. We have no public here tonight, so I'm not going to put this out to the public for comment. Would anybody like to make a motion? Do we need to make a motion?
I'd so move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Strong?
What exactly does the motion say?
To adopt.
The resolution. Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connors? Yes. Well done.
Thank you. All right. Second item, I just want to give a update to what we've all been experiencing here in the community and in the state, the winter storm, all winter storms. It's been interesting at staff level dealing with it. Staff has responded to the challenge greatly. Everyone's been pulling in extra hours and following through on commitments, which is great. And more importantly, our community has fared extremely well compared to other communities, and I think that's also very telling. It's kind of hit and miss with the type of storms we're having with the bands of moisture as they come in off the Pacific, but I will take the luck any day so we don't have to face the challenges that other communities have. So I just want to, I have a couple of notes, and I'm just going to go through them real quick. From city's response, basically, the Public Works crew has been putting in extra hours. They've been held on standby over the weekend in hours when we think the, the storm's going to reach its greatest intensity. Their main focus has been cleaning and clearing stain, or storm drains, clearing debris from, debris from streets. As well at that time, they've also been coordinating with the school district to make sure the school routes are clear early in the morning. So we're getting, we're getting city crews out there in advance of the bus activity. So that is all good. We are maintaining the sandbag station, which is located at the east parking lot adjacent to the Justice Center. We are receiving donations of material, especially sand material from Northern Aggregates. I appreciate that support. We also receive material from the county because we're in recognition that that station supports county residents as well. So we are, it's, it's a city facility and a city supply, but we are accommodating our neighbors in the county as well. So if you need that sand and you need the sandbags, please come down and access that I know Chief Lizaraga is not here, but him and I have been attending the county's all area operation calls each morning. We're getting feedback and updates on the weather systems and also how the county is responding. So it's been informative to see how the county is treating this and how their organization. We, we, the municipalities, had several calls as well between the four city managers. We are concerned for Port Arena. They're taking, Point Arena, they're taking a pretty severe beating out there. As you can recognize, they already have a declaration of emergency, and they are responding. We've been making sure that Paul Anderson, the city manager, is out, out there. He knows he's not alone. We reminded him that if he needs anything, let us know. We have that mutual aid agreement in place, so there may be an opportunity where we have to supply some material resources or staff to get him out of the situation. The problem is they get isolated. Highway one gets cut off both north and south, so it's pretty rough to access that. The big item I want to also mention with the, the storm is the declarations that have been made. So there is a federal declaration, which is a category B, so that means the jurisdictions can apply for reimbursement for expenses occurred either for staff time, resources deployed. At this time, there's no options for private or personal assistance. That is something that hopefully is changed, because in other parts of the state, and especially in this county, there is residents who have been impacted negatively by the storm, so that's something we need to consider. The county's declaration does cover us for this time being. It's universal. We are tracking, we being the other municipalities, to see if we need to do a declaration, a declaration on our own. We're not there yet. We have incurred significant damage, but if that situation changes, we will respond. Current conditions, it's raining. It's been raining, especially today. It's been a little harder than we were originally expecting. Our concern is the winds. For the next 48 hours, we're expected gusts here in the valley upwards of 45, 50 miles per hour with saturated soils. It's going to be a problem with the trees, so that's something we're going to have to deal with. The streams and the creeks are stayed in the channels. Crews are, our city crews are monitoring them almost on an hourly basis. I get updates from the crews, so we're tracking them. If any resident sees excessive erosion or slumping of bank material by their property, please let us know. We need to be aware of that. And that leads to the situation that we face with the railroad trestle structure that is immediately downstream from the East Valley Street Bridge. Staff, I'm looking at Dusty Dooley over there. He led the effort recently coordinating with the state coastal conservancy and the scum train to have that structure removed. It needed to come down. It was going to pose a significant risk to private property owners and in ultimately the city infrastructure. So we had that coordination take place, and I think that was good. There's still a little bit of the details that need to be worked out after the fact permitting, but we're monitoring that, and hopefully the responsible parties follow through. Just going through my notes. One last item, Solid Waste of Willett has agreed to extend yard waste pickups on Fridays from now to the first Friday in February, which I'm looking at my notes, is February 3rd. So once again, I appreciate that effort as well.
Is it starting this Friday?
Starting this Friday, yes.
Thank you.
To help clean up all those branches that we're all finding in our yards.
Yes. Hopefully we're just finding small branches.
Right, not trees.
Yes.
Those green dens are going to be very heavy.
Mine are awful.
Yeah, mine are filled with water, too. But, yeah, we appreciate that. It's, you know, it's been a community-wide effort. Everyone's been looking out for each other, and that is good.
I just would like to call out Nigel Sweeney, too. I've had several members of the public say they see him everywhere, including the storm drains. So thank you, Nigel.
Nigel hops from one scene to another. So yes, it's great that we, like I said, the team at Public Works, they've been putting a lot of hours in. We, we establish a little bit of a food station for them so they can come in here, dry out, grab some snacks and drinks, and get back out there and hit it hard again. So, you know, under the leadership of Scott Herman and Ken O'Shea, Public Works has been dancing pretty hard, but we're getting it done.
Very good. Madge, did you have something?
Yeah, it's, it's slightly off topic. I really will want to commend the, the staff for keeping up with it, and it really is noticeable that, you know, clearing those storm drains and, and the debris that would otherwise be causing a lot of flooding. So really appreciate that. The other subject related to that is that people that don't have shelter are out in the rain and cold and gusty winds. And I know that it's kind of beyond what the city can possibly deal with in the short term, but I, I really want us to keep our eyes open for any way that we can help temporarily or whatever people that are unsheltered to get through winter storms like this without freezing to death. I, I got a message from Helen Flandes, who's the director of Anzenita, and she just feels terrible when she has to tell people, go out and try to find a place that you can be out of the rain. A hates putting people out in the street.
The county is maintaining their shelters, unfortunately predominantly in the Ukiah community, but county services available. If anyone sees a individual who is suffering from the elements, please contact the county or contact us, and we'll try to get to the county and get that individual some help.
Are there emergency vouchers or anything?
I believe there are, but, you know, once again, the county is, you know, they're kind of dealing with, you know, excessive items as well, large population down in Ukiah. But if we need to get some help up here, we'll try to do the best we can.
I think some of us business owners have noticed an increase in the, the number of people that are sleeping in our doorways at night. I know I have a regular since the storm that has happened, and I feel bad that the individual's out, so I'm just more tolerable because there isn't, you know, we all struggle with like, how do you, how do you help? And I think just having a little extra patience and understanding and not saying hey and running them off if, if you can, so. But I do wish there was something more that we could do, too, but it's, yeah, what to do that would truly be helpful is always the, the challenge. I had a question about sandbags, because there was, there was some confusion about whether there's just sand or there's sandbags, or was there a time when we ran out of sandbags? And if we run out of sandbags, somebody said something about the fire department was getting them out, giving them out, and then I went to the fire department, and they said, no, we don't have any here. So could you just clarify where?
We have both items. We have the sand, we have the bags. Yes, there's been run on bags. Public Works crew goes out there every couple hours to make sure that there's enough bags. We have gone through our supply. I think the last number I ever heard was over 10,000 to 12,000 individual bags.
Are we using the, the burlap ones, or are we using plastic?
We are using the plastic.
The plastic, okay.
So, and right now, the supply of sandbags or the actual bags themselves are starting to run scarce throughout, throughout the state, as we all can realize. We do have the FEMA flood supply connex trailer. There are bundles of the older style burlap bags in there. If necessary, we can have access to that, release those. But right now, I think we still had another huge bundle at Public Works.
So if they run out, just tell people, check back in an hour or two and try again. It's not that we're completely out, we just, then we have to reach out.
I think we're down to our last bundle, and that was Monday afternoon.
Free duty trash bags.
Yeah, Monday afternoon, we were down to our last bundle, and I think that's, you know, about 10, 5,000, something like that.
Okay. And then on the scum train repairs, when you talk about repairs, are you talking about the repairs being simply to keep any damage from flowing downstream, or are you talking about restoring it back to?
So the, the compromised trestle, the structure was physically removed. So right now, there is no structure, either at the bank, at the bank or, or connected to the trestle that's adjacent to it, the eastern trestle, that we've been referring to internally. It's removed. The city's not in the business of building trestles in the future, so that's something that the state and scum train operation will need to consider. But that trestle that was removed was non-operational, it was a non-operational track, and was not used for decades almost.
The train track that's currently in use is on the eastern trestle.
Yes. They were two independently constructed trestles, structures, but somewhere over recent history, maybe 20, 30 years ago, maybe even later than that, a covering was connecting, was attached to cover both. So basically, from the surface, they looked like there were one huge structure, but underneath, and their piers and channel were two separate structures.
I think it was a safety issue then a couple of years ago, so that people wouldn't step in between the, and then dirt and everything got on it, so it looked like it was all one piece.
So our fear for the, for the insistence, insistence that that structure would be removed, the decking, the piers underneath gave way, the decking was starting to cave in and fold into the current. So that was a problem there. It was starting to catch and collect debris and create an impound, impoundment to the ongoing flow and then back up the water. Or if it let go and took the rest of that structure with it, and maybe the structure adjacent to it, then that could have been, the channel and the current going downstream get snagged on the East Commercial Street Bridge and then created even some more severe flooding. So, and then of course, if it backed up, then we had private property we had to deal with.
That's a concern. I was thinking long-term as well, because the scum train does bring in tourism, people buying their gas and food and so on and so forth.
They still have, they still have their operational line, and hopefully there is a physical assessment done on that after the, the currents, and there's some scouring and eroding of the material adjacent to the piers and embankments that hopefully they will track and follow through.
Okay. Thank you.
It was state contractors who removed it?
It was a contractor that basically, once again, I'm pointing to Dusty over there. We were able to coordinate with Scott Herman. I think it was a contractor that was working on the demolition of the old Howard Hospital. They were able to mobilize equipment both from that site and in Ukiah. They were able to get on the scene. They worked with the railroad. The railroad allowed them access, actually, to stage their equipment on the active line immediately to the east, so they didn't have to put their equipment at risk adjacent on to unstable banks. So there was a lot of coordination, a lot of phone calls to the various parties, and once again, we appreciate Louisa Morris at the state coastal conservancy that really made things happen, to remind the scum train ultimately they had a responsibility.
Okay.
That's it. So hopefully it stops raining pretty fun, pretty soon. We are rather drenched here. That's what I have.
Thank you, Brian. All right, we're going to move on to item nine, which is department recommendations. These are action items. The first item is to approve a new description to our compliance officer for placement within the community development department effective January 17th of this year, and we will hear from our human resources manager, Karen Stevenson.
Good evening, council. I'd first of all like to add on to what Brian had shared in regards to our employees and how they came to the community's aid. Our officers, our dispatchers, our public works teams, water, wastewater, even staff at city hall, we all just dug in together and worked while these individuals were out in the elements and trying to work with county roads that were open when ours were closed. But, you know, they made sure, first of all, that their families were taken care of, their homes were safe. And then they came without question for long hours. We had people spending the night in the plants just to make sure they're running. And, you know, our, our people really do make me proud every day, so wanted to thank them. In regards to our new description for code compliance officer in the community development department, this was actually approved by council like five years ago, but back in the John Sherman era, he thought he could keep doing it, and so we never implemented it. It is in our budget currently as code enforcement officer. We kind of like code compliance officer, a little different. It is a non-exempt, non-management position. So we wanted to split the tasks and allow Davy, both our building official, to focus on that, because there is a lot on this plate, and actually create this new position that will focus on code compliance. In the code, it does speak to code enforcement officer, and we believe that those, the compliance and enforcement are interchangeable. Since it's already in the, the budget, there's no additional fiscal impact, we will increase the staffing by one, and which does mean that there is some fiscal impact, because they still have to be covered with benefits. I do recommend that you approve the description, and I would like to address any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions for Karen?
Are they going to continue on where we left off with the last person? That was Davy was the last one that did it, with items that he had started and didn't come to fruition?
Yes, it is my understanding. He's going to work very closely with Davy, understand what the priorities are, and then move forward. Dusty being Davy's immediate supervisor, do you have anything to add?
Counselmember Steny, that's exactly correct. I mean, this new position would take the lead on any code enforcement activities, including any cases that we currently have that Davy hasn't been able to close, so.
My, my question was that we have things that are ongoing, and seem to we, we drop the ball every time we have one of these kind of things, and there are people that have been getting away with things for a really long time.
Yeah, I, I could assume I know exactly what you're talking about, but let's be sure to coordinate and make sure we understand what exactly those things are.
Thank you very much.
This will give us the capacity to certainly beef up our enforcement effort.
Do we have an individual in mind at this point, or? No, we are going to do an internal and external recruitment at the same time.
All right.
We were hoping we had somebody on the line, but.
I would just say that I would hope that the person you hire for this position has the same wonderful attitude and personable qualities that Davy has. I have heard from community members, he is actually a really pleasant person to deal with on things that can be unpleasant. So he sets a great tone and I hope that will continue.
That's why we kind of like compliance over enforcement.
I get it.
We were happy to, I was going to say, steal Nigel into that position because he was very excited about it, but yeah, it's cut and pay actually. Kind of doesn't work with no overtime.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear you say that, Mary, because this position, the right attitude counts for a lot, almost more than experience sometimes.
Yeah.
You find that to be true.
It's in line with our goals?
Indeed, yes. All right. There are no members of the public here tonight, so I won't put this out for a public comment. But do we have a motion?
Oh, so move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the new description for a compliance officer for placement within the community development department effective January 17th of this year. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connie?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is to approve a new social media policy that establishes guidelines for the use of City of Willett's social media sites as a means to convey to citizens of Willett's information. This will become effective January 12th if approved. And once again, we'll hear from Karen.
So the City of Willett's has an obligation to disseminate information about the city to its citizens through various medias. Mainly, the city uses Facebook through emails. I haven't found anybody on Twitter or Instagram or any of those, although PD has somebody over there that's a little bit more savvy in those medias. It is a plan that we stole directly from Ukiah, but we felt that it met our needs. And with the growing concerns around social media and false information as being shared, we want to make sure that is the city has some control over our pages and the information that goes onto it and making sure that, you know, we're getting out to the members of our public accurate information in a timely manner. The policy sets expectations for appropriate behavior, clear social media guidelines to help employees understand ways they can use social media to help achieve the goals listed above. Because again, as social media continues to grow popularity, we want to ensure that our employees think very carefully before they respond to maybe somebody who's made a comment on another social site because maybe they may not represent the city. Maybe they don't have the right information or we don't want them to be combative in messages. So we're hoping that we're able to get this through unless you have any suggestive changes that you would like for me to look into.
I like the policy. I just want to make sure that as we reach out and whether we add a Twitter account or we add a TikTok account that I've noticed kind of like our website, we have it, then the person who was doing it goes away and then it sits there. And I just don't want to see a situation where we do multiple platforms and then they kind of go stale and then people either hack in or do something and then we kind of look bad. I'd rather have less of a presence and be thorough than, you know, have multiple platforms out there that nobody is servicing on a regular basis because I think then it goes stale or it gets hijacked.
We do have a situation, two situations that I'm aware of there, like our city page is actually the, I don't know if you want to call it the owner, is two city managers prior. And we have worked to no avail with Facebook to get them to give that authorization to the current city manager and we've not been able to do so. We have a development, community development website from, which is fabulous actually, but not current. And that's also because of a prior planner had access to it and we're not able to bring it down or make changes to that. But we are doing what we can. We do want to limit what we have out there. And I believe Walstrom is the social media individual for the PD.
Yep.
Do you have, other than Facebook, have you put together TikToks or Twitter or any of that?
So I uploaded a video onto our Instagram last week and I can tell you that for the size of our page, we were.
In a good way, I hope.
Yeah. Not everybody's seen it. It's our Instagram handle is Willett's PD official. We uploaded a video of us groundin' donkeys.
Who's going to say it had to be the donkeys?
And it's for a page that has all of 144 followers. It's gotten shared to 24,495 different accounts.
It was the donkeys.
It was the donkeys. And then I actually uploaded the same video. We don't have a part of TikTok. I don't know that we can get one. We don't have enough cool stuff to keep fresh on there. I uploaded the same video with a different song. Should Have Been a Cowboy is not available on TikTok. Mama Don't Let Your Babies Grow Up To Cowboys is. So I uploaded onto a personal TikTok and it was over 600,000 views, 2,000 comments and I think there are maybe six negative ones out of all that. It's been super overwhelmingly positive.
I can not like the donkeys, no.
They were fun. They were the friendliest donkeys I've ever met. Yeah, we've been trying to upload every positive thing we can as well as informative posts when we can too.
Is that the standard training exercise on Fridays or?
The donkeys? I was a deputy before, so I love it. I'm here for it. I carry rope in my car. It's actually more useful than you think. So if it's weekend days, both me and Officer Gatto, both prior deputies, we got line rank and we'll talk.
I just have a question since I extremely rarely go on any of those social media sites. Are we or can we post things showing how our staff are handling the flooding and the upkeep and the trestle and all that and have some current, relatively current, good news about how city is doing?
Absolutely. We do. They are doing that? Good. Doing a good job. I do have one comment, Karen. I like the policy. There is some discussion in it about removal of comments either from the public, I think particularly from the public. And I think within reason, that makes sense. The city should be able to protect itself and make sure that there's nothing, you know, pornographic or incredibly obscene or threatening on our city pages. However, I just would hope that we are very conservative in what we do remove. You know, there are people out there who, just as we welcome negative criticism here in city council chambers, people should be able to say what they're going to say, even if it's, you know, not what we want to hear.
Exactly. And at this stage of the game, the only person who'd be authorizing to remove it would be the city manager, Brian Bender.
Okay. And to date, we have never removed anything from our Facebook page. Because we can't.
And Facebook as an organization generally will not take an item down. It has to be, like you said, something severe or it puts at risk public health, city welfare from our perspective. If we can make that clear, fine. If we just ask Facebook as a corporation to remove John Smith's post because John Smith is angry at the city, that's not good. But if John Smith is actively saying he's going to destroy something or create harm, mass destruction, yes, Facebook would respond.
And it's also to get our employees to know that not everybody thinks the way they do. They do have the right to have a difference of opinion. And sometimes employees will come to me and they will say they feel harassed or because of certain comments, they feel they're being personally attacked. And we just try to tell them, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's a keyboard warrior. They have the right to say what they want to say. So, yeah, we've had several of our officers that have really gone the gambit, but it's, we allow our community to speak their mind.
And thankfully, most people don't see those things to our faces.
Isn't there a provision also if we do have to take something down because it is offensive or whatever, that we have to keep a record of that?
That would have been the policy.
Yes, we have to, we haven't figured out how it's going to be counted yet because we've never had to do it, but we're still looking into that.
One other item Karen did mention in one of the earlier statements is that this policy does mirror what Ukiah has adopted. I asked Sage how it's been applied there, how it's been used, how effective. And he said, "It's good. They haven't had to invoke any of the drastic measures in there. It's just a policy that, once again, it's recommended through all our REMIF slash Sierra clients, municipal clients. They would like to have this in place just in case there is a claim of, you know, violation of activity on social media." So I just want to convey this is not an attempt that we want to go out and gives me the heavy hammer so I can start censoring people or preventing dialogue or discourse. That's not our intent. We welcome social media activity. Yes, sometimes it's painful, but like just today, the mayor forwarded several Facebook posts regarding groundwater conditions and that kickstarted what we needed to do internally to respond to those, both on the public works side as well as the utility billing. So yes, there is a tool there, is a device. In today's society, more people like responding to Facebook than actually coming down to City Hall or picking up the phone, giving us a call.
I see this policy really is just crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, like having it on the books. So thank you for your work on this. Anything else from council on this matter?
Remove approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And this is to approve the new social media policy establishing guidelines for the use of our City of Willett's social media sites effective January 12th. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
I'm the only one that's not affected by this because I get it still at the grocery store. Yes, folks.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connie?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, next item. We would like to adopt a resolution to approve the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule, the ROPS for 2325 and administrative budget for July of 2023 through December 2024. We will be hearing from our finance director, Emmanuel. Let's go.
Good evening, mayor. City council, city manager. It's my pleasure to present to you Willett's Predevelopment Agency's last and final obligation payment schedule, or ROPS, as it's often called. My hopes were that I would only be putting out one ROPS this year, but unfortunately with the conversation to Doc, I'm going to probably have to do an annual ROPS as well just to cover our bases in case the last and final fails. There are sometimes various things that they want us to keep doing annual ROPS for. But conversations with them, with our representative, Matt Bar, he said that he doesn't see it failing, but it's good to cover our bases anyway. So I'm going to go ahead and present that next council meeting. But this is still an accomplishment. The actions taken by council about two years ago when we, in our refunding of the bonds in 2020, in August of 2020, has given us enough savings in order to be able to actually and shorten up our payment schedule so that we save money and are able to do this now at this time. So the last and final ROPS is, remains, sorry, the last and final ROPS is successful, if the last and final ROPS is successful, the finance department, like it feels, the finance department feels it would be, the dispersment will become automatic all the way till September of 2024. So we won't have to do anything anymore. The money just comes in and, yeah, and we just pay our bond. So after that, most of the costs will be negligible and all that will be left is arbitrage and continuing disclosures, which are minimal costs. So, and with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Financial housekeeping.
Financial housekeeping.
Anybody have questions?
How much will it save us?
Well, it just saves us in terms of being able to standardize our continuing disclosures and everything with that. So it's about somewhere around like $10,000, $20,000, just in time, effort and energy.
No members of the public, so no public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move the resolution presented by staff.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connie?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, man.
Fingers crossed, last and final.
If you find any money in the couch or anything when you're doing, just let us know.
It's funny, someone has a couch in their office.
Yeah. We're all laughing.
This next item, the Measure K, and I just want to jump in here, Manny, real quick and tee it off for you. So I had a couple of conversations with council members and some members of the public. There is a little lag in this coming before the council and I just want to make it clear that this was no attempt to mislead the public or the council regarding our financial health or the financial status of the Measure K funding, which was adopted, approved by the public back in the fall of 2020 to put us in the right footing for at least the next 10 years financially. As we all know, Manny's basically been here a year now. And within that year, the ground he has covered has been tremendous. Prior to that year, we essentially did not have a finance department and we didn't have audits. So part of this ordinance for this oversight committee required the review of audits. We didn't have audits complete. So we just didn't see it timely to have this committee convene. Yes, we probably should have went through the process and at least have it formed. That's my bad. That is not Manny's fault. So from this point on, we are now structurally sound for our financial practices, have protocols under Manny's guidance. So that's why this is coming forward to you now. And Manny will go into the details of the justification and how we envision this oversight committee to respond to items that are presented to it and then ultimately review and provide it back to the council for a recommendation and guidance regarding the Measure K revenue stream into the city's funding package. Okay. Thank you, Manny.
So this agenda summary and resolution is basically asking you guys to choose amongst you two representatives for the city council membership. And then after that, you will be choosing three representatives of community members. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a, there's people that were suggested by council in order to be able to come to participate in this committee. So we're going to have an application process and then a selection of the two people, two members of this council and I believe the city manager. So the idea behind this is to be able to select candidates that can review and advise on the usage of Measure K and also review our usage of Measure K so that we do good fiscal stewardship. The other section of this would be to approve the guidelines and responsibilities and how this committee acts and what is its role. And so in the packet, there is that as well. So having written this out, I basically tried to set this up as an advisory committee. And if there's any component that you think needs to be changed or something, you have the option to do that.
Okay.
Naj? Just wondering how long, once we've had our two representatives from the council before people that want, you know, that are interested in being on that committee, how soon is that going to become effective?
We are looking at having our meeting sometime in the middle of March, so it'll be fairly quickly. We've already contacted, I believe, five out of the six, or did we contact all of them? Four. Four, okay. So we contacted four. Okay, so we got contacted four of the people and we have four responses of yes, if I remember correctly. So we will be choosing three out of those four. So we will be choosing three out of those four. If not, if there's not more that come in and we write out an application, we'll be able to try and join the committee as well. So that's something that we'll have to review.
It's going to be, it seems like it would be a little hard to unravel what is the normal city funding stream from the Measure K stream. It's all going into the budget, so is that?
Actually, the Measure K funding is separated. It's in its own fund. It's under Fund 150, and it'll remain in its own fund so that whenever we utilize that funding, it'll be purposeful. Whenever we decide to move money, we'll have reasons behind it, and as part of the budget, it'll just be a transfer over into the general fund.
That's a good idea.
Just to clarify, Manny, we have been collecting Measure K money since the voters approved this in late 2020, but we haven't spent any of that Measure K money, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Most of it's still in that fund, all of it's still in that fund, actually.
It actually did not kick in until, I think, April of...
There was a lag on that.
There was a lag.
Right.
About $100,000 went into the fund at the end of the fiscal year 2021, and the remainder of the funds that is currently actively in it is all that was collected from '21, '22, and even to now.
So, and just for full disclosure, right now, we're looking at, it's averaging, the expectation of the average is just shy of a million?
Just shy of a million, yes.
On an average collection?
Per year, yes. Any other questions? Comments?
Comments, I'm interested.
Okay. I sort of thought that it would be appropriate for the two council members to serve on the Measure K committee to be the two members of the finance committee. Do any other council members have a thought on that?
I'm okay with it. You know, I really advocated for this because I saw that we had long-term leakage and all that, so I, there's a part of me that if nobody wanted to do it, I would step up, but I feel like I want fresh eyes looking at it from the council, and I'm perfectly okay with finance committee looking at it at this point.
Any thoughts, Madge, Larry? How do you feel about that?
I think whatever you guys come up with is good for me.
As long as it's not me, I'm happy with it.
All right.
Although I am interested in it, I just, I have my plate just pretty full, but I think this is really an exciting opportunity for us to, you know, to kick up our game with this extra revenue, and I think it's great to have a committee that will look at it and see how we can best spend that money.
And help keep the process transparent to the public.
Yes.
I had, you just had a comment. When Measure K was on the ballot, we identified that half a dozen are more critical uses for the money, and as I understand it, Measure K money is in the general fund, can be used for basically any purpose. However, we went out to the public identifying what our needs were and campaigned, for example, I'm looking at it here, and it says, whereas the City of Willets has approximately $15 million in necessary road improvements over the next 10 years, and existing one-half cent sales tax, et cetera, is underfunded, whereas the City of Willets lacks adequate funds to pay for an estimated $4 billion in parks and building maintenance services, an additional $4 million in infrastructure improvement projects. And anyway, there are six or eight identified things, we went to the public pitching this for, and perhaps, perhaps the committee should be reviewing those things once they're formed.
Yeah, I would hope that once the committee meets, they would actually get the text of the ballot measure so that they could look at what the public is expecting, be reminded of that, and then make their decisions and recommendations based on those things.
During the onboarding process, our plan is to actually not only provide that information to them, including like what has actually been deposited into the accounts, but also the philosophy behind the budget and how the money moves, and get a little bit of an understanding for, you know, so that committee is empowered to be able to make decisions with foresight and capability. I don't know if that's what we're looking for.
Thank you. Yeah.
You know, I just want to say that I appreciate the work that's gone in, and again, I had told members of the public who asked when this was going to happen, that especially before you got on, I said, look, we can't look forward or even back, or we don't know what's happened. And it's, you know, it's been a revolving door in finance before you got here, and so I appreciate everything you've done. And again, transparency is important in getting it out there, so I just wanted to put that out there.
I would sit there and say that within the next couple of weeks, we should have an application ready to go, and that they can come and pick it up over at City Hall to fill it out.
Is the recommended membership of that committee coming up to the city council, or is that just done administratively?
That's administratively. That way...
By the two members who are...
Yeah, exactly. And so the two members would select out of the applicants that have filled out an application, and then we would go from there.
Okay.
I'd like to move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution establishing the Measure K advisory committee as stated by Municipal Code Section 3.2.140 in Ordinance 2020-03. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yep.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connie?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Manny.
Okay, moving on to Department Monthly Reports, item 10. We will have none presented tonight, as we generally hear those reports at the second monthly meeting. So item 11 is City Council Announcement Communications and Reports. One item under this is the mayor's appointments for city committees, boards, and agencies for 2023. I have heard from council members in other cities in Mendocino County that there were some big surprises and shakeups on their board appointments, but we won't have any here in Willets. It's pretty much the same as we have been doing this last year. We are going to stay with, oh, actually, you know what?
I'm going to, I will fix the finance committee.
Yeah, finance committee is listed as myself and Jerry, but we are actually going to do myself and Suprina, who we're going to stay on as we had been doing.
That's why I said what I said earlier.
Yes, thank you.
I was very confused, but I was wrong with that.
Yeah, no, no, we weren't going to switch that one up. Water and wastewater will stay Jerry and Larry, Rebiad Ed, Suprina and Larry. On the regional boards, we're keeping Jerry on with Leica California Cities, Larry as alternate. I will stay on with MCAG, Larry as alternate. Madge will stay with EDFC. She will also stay with MSWMO, with Jerry as alternate. And Suprina, who is the chair of MTA, will stay on as our representative on the MTA board. Jerry will stay with LAVCO. I will stay with the Mendocino County Museum. Suprina will continue to serve on our ad hoc committee for arts. Madge will be our representative to Snow and Clean Power. And we don't have the tobacco ordinance on here, or the tobacco ad hoc committee, but Jerry and I both serve on that. And then we will need to add the Measure K committee, and I would like that to be Suprina and I as the members of the finance committee.
And then I have a quick question. The general plan, is that, is that an ad hoc? Is that a committee? What capacity are we operating in? Is that something that we need to add to there, or is that just...
It's an advisory committee, so it's not something that's established by...
And it's not a council committee.
Right.
So we're going to have representation from the council, but it's not your committee.
Okay.
One other item, Madam Mayor, from our earlier discussion regarding the transportation ad hoc committee?
Oh, yes. Would you like to discuss that?
Yes, so staff had a discussion yesterday that took place that was centered around our pending meeting regarding the CIP goals and the adopted goals and project prioritization. Probably predating most of us in this room, the city, back in the early 2000s, completed a pavement preservation plan, and that was based out of a transportation ad hoc committee. And that committee met a few times in the 2000s, I think the last one maybe was early 2012, 2013, 2014 to amend the plan. Talking with the engineering department, ESA, as well as the city engineer, Rod Wilburn, what we would like to do is reconvene that transportation ad hoc committee, but we want to do it with a different focus. We want to do it not how we're going to best pave streets, but we want to look at how we can improve the comprehensive holistic approach to transportation planning in this community, not only for wheel traffic or automobiles, but also for pedestrians, cyclists, people who have mobility challenges as well. Also, we want to tie that back to land use decisions. We want to take a different approach. We can't keep putting money into streets. There's other needs, and I think this community deserves that look. So we're asking for the council to consider reconvening the transportation subcommittee, excuse me, ad hoc committee, to look at these items that we want to bring forward.
I think you'd be perfect on that committee.
I think it sounds delightful. Does anyone else have any interest in serving on that committee?
I'm willing, but if there's somebody else that's interested...
If you're willing, I will let you do it, otherwise I wouldn't.
All right, then let's add the newly reformed transportation ad hoc committee. Is that what we're going to call it?
Thank you. At this point, yes. So, but I think the focus is, it's not going to be just looking at the pavement preservation plan. Like I said, it's going to be looking at all those items. I talked to Dusty a little bit about it as well. He's on board because he sees the land use component in it as well, and I think it's a different direction for the council. One point I do want to correct is that the mayor will be attending the mayor's meeting later, probably in February, that's when the regional appointments are going to be confirmed.
Okay.
So you've got to take the recommendations from this council to that group, and that is for the Snow and Clean Power and then LAVCO.
And then when I served on that, there was an opportunity to argue for elevating Willets into a leadership role, so I wish that I had known that before I got to the meeting, because I nominated Jerry, hoping that if we got a bigger seat at the table, that Jerry would just say, yeah. There was a little bit of push and pull with Fort Bragg and Ukiah, but is there, is there anything that you want our mayor to know before she goes into that meeting that you know that might be coming her way that she doesn't know yet?
Well, I think that right now what's happening with LAVCO is that Point Arena exited. I think there was always a desire to have somebody from the coast, but then it can't seem to stay on that. And I'm the alternate, and I think I kind of put out that I'd be willing to be the not alternate if that's the case, but...
So did you want to take us that back?
We definitely want Jerry on there, so the city's doing.
I know I advocated for you because Ukiah was pushing hard for it to be Fort Bragg, and I was like, no, it needs to be Willets. Willets wants it. If Ukiah wants to back out, they're welcome to, and we'll take that seat.
Well, actually, that's how I became the alternate, when Ukiah backed out, and I was termed out of my LAVCO appointment. I basically have been writing this with LAVCO. I came in at a partial term, then did another one, and then this last time was basically the alternate city rep.
So Brian, you'll send me the date on that.
Yes, and just, I'm also will be attending in your company as well.
Great.
Yes, it has been said yet, has not been said.
As far as Snow and Clean Power, all I know, I haven't really talked to any of the players, but Lindy Peters has been the designated city rep from Mendocino County, and I was the alternate. He's missed a few meetings. I've been trying to attend, but if he doesn't warn me that he's not attending, I haven't done my homework, so I'm very interested in what they're doing, Snow and Clean Power. Now that we're going to have to start meeting in person to have a forum, I think it's going to be easier for me to do that with Lindy Peters. I don't think he's going to feel, you know, witted to continue meeting at home, so I doubt that there's going to be a rush of other candidates. There are, and so do you.
I know Supervisor Jerry has recommended you. He would like to see you in the hall, so. All right, any further questions about the mayor's appointments? A, let's go with council member reports from any of your boards or other communications with Madge.
Unfortunately, I don't know whether the MSWO, the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority, will have it organized to have a meeting this month. There've been two changes in the city representation on it, so they might or might not be prepared to meet, which would be a week from tomorrow if they do. Otherwise, it'll go into February, and at this point, there's a lot of business that we need to attend to, and so I don't know how soon we will meet. EDFC, the Economic Development and Financing Corporation, is meeting tomorrow, and things are going on pretty smoothly with them, with a lot of loans being given out, and they're keeping track of diversifying their portfolio and trying to include, of course, include all of the different jurisdictions, but also a range of different kinds of industries. They used to be very heavy in restaurants and food, and now they're really getting a more diversified portfolio, and I feel like that one is on track.
Thank you.
Being tomorrow.
Suprina?
MTA unfortunately had to cancel some routes over to the coast, to Point Arena and to Fort Bragg, and so that's been a bit of a disappointment and a challenge in letting people know. We had to make sure that those that may need dialysis services or other types of medical needs, that we found alternative ways to meet their transportation needs and...
Is that due to weather or because of reduced ridership?
Road conditions and safety, and we weighed in with the sheriff's department and the county and just trying to really make sure that we can keep our drivers safe as we move around the county. This hasn't been a past practice. This is something that's new because the circumstances warranted it this year with the flooding and the high winds, so we do have some interruption in our service over to coastal areas, but all the inland buses are running, and that's about it on MTA's side.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Mary?
Nadine.
Okay. Jerry?
League has talked to Sarah, and they haven't set some of the local meetings, so I'm on the League Policy Committee meeting, and because of the weather, they postponed an introductory meeting. I told them I couldn't make tomorrow's meeting, but I would make the 26th meeting because it's online, so I think, same thing, they're transitioning to in-person meetings, so they'll have a Sacramento one that's coming in June, but otherwise, that's what I've got happening now. And then LAVCO, basically, I forgot to grab my notes, but basically, the sanitation district in Ukiah are working well now, and they ironed out their differences, and now they're working to transition. There's some areas down in Ukiah where they've got agreements in place to transition over some areas of the county that need sewer services that will be provided by the city, and it looks like it's working well. And LAVCO had to kind of bless that agreement, because normally a city can't go out into the county and provide services unless the plan is to eventually annex that property or incorporate it, and they're playing nice, and that's the way it should work with LAVCO and with cities and other entities, and it's working the way it's supposed to.
Good. Okay. I attended the museum advisory board meeting this morning. Our big news was election of chair and vice chair, and that stayed the same. Brett Walker, Willets resident, is the chair of that committee, and Ukiah resident Rebecca Montez is our vice chair. They're moving along with their strategic planning, and everything is going well. They were having to report absolutely no damage from the storms. It's the first time their facility has had no leaking, no problems, so that continues for them. The collections are in great shape. And MCAG does not have a January meeting. That's a normal occurrence, so we will be meeting next month. And that's it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just jump on that regarding the museum?
Yes.
We heard from Ms. Matheson, Matheson, last month. I just want to encourage everyone to participate with their online survey for their strategic planning.
I did the survey today. It takes literally no more than five minutes. They're just looking to find out how people... They're just looking to find out how people are utilizing the museum, what could get you to utilize it more, what services, exhibits, that kind of thing you'd like to see. So, anybody who has five minutes, if you could go online, it really helps the museum figure out how they can best serve the community countywide.
I found mine out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good and Welfare, item 12. Anybody have any Good and Welfare? Madge?
Willets Economic Globalization is having a public meeting on Sunday, February 5th at 4:00 at the fire station over here. And the idea is basically for, primarily for community groups to meet with each other and find out what we're all doing and see how we can be mutually supportive or at least not conflict with each other, but ideally really make connections in the community about how to make Willets a more healthy, sustainable little community. And people are very enthusiastic about it. We had a really informal meeting back in November and everybody said, "Let's do it again and let's invite more people." So, that's what we're doing on Sunday, February 5th at 4:00 at the fire station. It's a potluck, but I told people if you don't have time to make a dish, come anyway. They'll be, you know, they'll eat some food and it'll be a good discussion. Sunday before at, I think, 2:00 is going to be a film at The Grange that's called Seeds of, what's it called? Seeds of Vandana Shiva. And Vandana Shiva is an activist for local food and for trying to make sure that our food systems aren't dependent on GMOs and corporations, but that we, you know, have as much sustainability and local control over our food supply. And I think it's going to be a very interesting film and discussion. And there's going to be a seed exchange at The Grange. So, that's on the 29th of January, 2:00.
I just have a final thought. I'm curious to see, Madmo, when the information comes in on fourth quarter sales tax. I'd be curious as soon as that it comes in to get some information on how Willets fared. And if we're seeing another decline, the possibility of, you know, either at a council meet, a regular council meeting, or some kind of a work-study group discussing, you know, if we find that there was a significant decline, which I anticipate there could be in, in business sales that fourth quarter, that we talk about it and start developing a strategy, you know, maybe working closer with West Company or something of that nature, but really trying to figure out how we can help the business community. Because I, I know, we've got a business too and we, many of us talk to business owners. And I don't think that the fourth quarter went as well as many of us had expected. And I have some worry about, you know, that January, February, March is going to be, those are going to be hard months for businesses to decide whether or not they're going to hold on or they're going to close up. And so, just getting ahead of it and not letting it get too far out there before we react. So, the sooner we have information, the better.
We should receive our summary of fourth quarter tax receipts within the next week or three from Avenue.
Yeah, I think you should get all of us, but it's somewhere around like February.
Yeah.
So, if you could get those out soon to us, that would be good. So, we could potentially take action.
Would cannabis taxes also be available? I feel like it would be good for the council just to get an idea of where we are with revenue coming in.
Okay, yeah. I can look into it and see what we've got, but I can tell you preliminarily, there is a market downswing.
Dusty was leading our staff, staff discussion yesterday and it was not, was not pretty with the numbers and the comments regarding cannabis activity.
I think we're all, we're all feeling that things are shifting. So, the more information we can have, the sooner, I think, the better we can feel about making plans going forward. Madge?
Well, just triggered an item that when John Hass checked out, talked with us last time, he mentioned that the Board of Suits has been looking at a business development tax that would go beyond what the TOT already taxes motels and short-term rentals, but it would also hit restaurants and bar owners. And I'm not sure who all else, but they're talking about a fairly substantial extra tax on those businesses, which mostly is serving the tourist bureau or the Visit Mendocino Bureau, which is mostly focused on the coast. But our businesses here inland would be hit with this as well. And I just would like to make sure that we weigh in, that we don't necessarily think that's a very good idea. They're just, everybody's hanging on by their fingernails and?
This is a non-agendaist item, so we could probably talk, if we wanted to get into that in the future, we can put it on an agenda to talk about it. But I know where you're going. I understand where you're coming from. And I think the request to get those numbers so that we can make some good decisions going forward is probably where we should start.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to throw out a Good and Welfare. For anybody who doesn't know, longtime Willets resident, Edi Cecchiarelli, is now the oldest woman in America. She's 114 years old. She's looking to celebrate her 115th birthday next month. There will be a community birthday party, drive-by birthday party to wish her well. She's what, the fourth oldest person in the world now, is that right? Yeah. So, Willets, we've got some, some good long genes here, I guess, in our town.
We're on the map.
It winds the arteries with, you know, metal.
She's biopic. When I interview you on her birthday, don't say it's the Willets.
No.
No, and to that effect, we are both, I know Kathy and Dolores are, we typically have been doing proclamations. We want to do one special. So, yeah, we're on it.
Okay. All right. We have no closed session tonight. So, I think without further ado, I will call this meeting adjourned at exactly 7:46 PM. Thank you, everybody.